That process and then, and then move forward.
All right, I guess since we're outside of the meeting technically, we'll go with a consensus. Is anyone opposed to making a public notice of our technical difficulties? And posting the recorded meter, meeting later and moving forward as we, as we are without it being a live feed. Councilman Phillips, are you opposed?
You'll have to, everyone. I was muted. I have no problem.
Okay. Councilman Hollinsworth, no problem with it. Councilman Williams?
No problem.
Councilman Nguyen?
We will have the assurance that it will be full broadcast after it's available in its entirety.
Yes, sir. Yeah, there'll be the recorded version.
Recorded version. With that assurance, I would say it's all right.
All right, and myself, I'm okay with it. All right, so we do have a consensus. And one last time, Wilson, have you made any headway?
No, sir. It's, it's blocking me on what we're doing. I'm trying to go through, I'm trying to go through.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I may interject one other thing, of course, Wilson can continue. Wilson can continue his efforts to get us back on a live stream and, and take it. And he can let us know that, that that is back whenever. But anyway.
Okay. All right, and Wilson, are you confident that we're being recorded?
Yes, sir, you are. It's, it's, I started the recording for the, for the consensus.
All right, all right, one last small disclosure before we get, get moving. Out here in the country, I'm operating on satellite internet. We've got inclement weather. Sometimes I do lose signal. If I lose signal, Vice Chairman will pick up until I can step out and use a cellphone in the car. That being said, it is now six oh eight. A call to order the December seventh, two thousand twenty Hampton County Council Virtual Meeting. Item two on the agenda, invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, two point one invocation. We have Councilman Nguyen back with us tonight. Councilman Nguyen, would you lead us in invocation? Everyone please stand.
Our fathers will, in this meeting, and project in the future of our agreements and their transparency being our main goal. Let us be assured that when we meet together, we are one, although we have controversies. And it's been a bad year and a lot of things, and a lot of people's going to be glad it's over. But with your help and the persistence and trusting in you, we will have guidance and, and control. And may you, Council, be blessed with patience and transparency also. And learn to live with each others. If you have different opinions, it's all right because we're friends still afterwards. In your name sake, amen.
Amen. Councilman Williams, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone please be seated. Give me one moment. All right, moving on. Item three, adoption of agenda and consent agenda. Three point one, consent agenda. Three point two, December seventh, two thousand twenty Hampton County Council Virtual Meeting Agenda. Was the pleasure of council?
This chairman makes a motion that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda for December seventh, two thousand twenty. By way of virtual meeting.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say, uh, yay for yes, nay for no. Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Nguyen?
Yay.
And myself, yay. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four, public hearings. Comments concerning the proposed ordinances can be submitted to the clerk to counsel by email. A Newton at Hampton County SC dot org. Please place in the subject line, public comments, twelve seven, two thousand twenty. Or mail to the Hampton County Council Office at two hundred Jackson Street. Avenue East, Hampton, South Carolina, two nine nine two four. The deadline for receipt of public comment is December seventh, two thousand twenty at twelve noon. All comments will be presented to council at the meeting. Please visit Hampton County, South Carolina, county council website for a link and or contact information to access the virtual meeting. That brings us to item four point one. I will now open public hearing for item four point one. It reads as follows. Twenty twenty dash zero zero one. An ordinance to amend the amended and restated master agreement for the establishment of Quad County Industrial Park One, Part Two, Part Three. Dated as May sixth, two thousand thirteen. Entered by and among Allendale County, South Carolina, Bamberg County, South Carolina. Barnwell County, South Carolina, and Hampton County, South Carolina. Providing for the development of certain multi-county industrial parks. So as to include additional property geographically located in Hampton County, South Carolina. And anticipated to be owned and or operated by Yield Scientific LLC. In that portion of the parks delineated in the park agreement as part three. Geographically located in Hampton County, South Carolina, and other matters related here too. We have no comments that have been filed in advance. Mr. Strickland, would you like to comment on this from your side?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, um, this is the multi-county revenue sharing agreement. Related to what we used to call Project Z, of course, Yield Scientific LLC. Which is currently under construction rapidly out in the Southern Carolina industrial campus and early branch. Of course, just to refresh, hereby, the project is pledged to invest thirty million and create one hundred and seven new full-time jobs. Think we, we started the discussion on this one quite a while back, passed unanimously. So I would ask for adoption later on tonight as well. Glad to see those guys moving so fast.
All right. Okay, we don't have any questions filed, other stated from the public or any statements. So with that being said, we'll close the public hearing for item four point one. Moving on to item four point two. I now open the public hearing for four point two. Twenty twenty dash zero zero two. An ordinance authorizing, one, execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of the tax incentive agreement. By and between Hampton County, South Carolina, the county. And Yield Scientific LLC, a company previously identified as Project Z, acting for itself. One or more affiliates and or other project sponsors collectively to come. Pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiable fee in lieu of avalerum taxes, FLO. With respect to the establishment and or expansion of certain facilities. In the county, the project. Number two, the benefits of the multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and project. Three, certain special source revenue credits in connection with project. And four, other matters related there to Yield Scientific LLC, previously known as Project Z. On item four point two, this public hearing, we have no comments and or questions filed from the public in advance. So, Mr. Strickland, I'm going to give you the floor again.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So while we did the multi-county park in the previous hearing. This is the public hearing on the actual tax deal that we have cut with Yield Scientific. Did go back and, and review the documents today. All the, the changes between the company's attorney and the county's attorney were, you know, we were able to come to an agreement there. And did go and look, the first year tax payment is slated to be about ninety one thousand dollars. So just, just wanted to add that as well, and I would ask for adoption later on.
All right, thank you, sir. And as previously stated, there were no prior filed comments or questions from the public on this one. So I now close the public hearing for item four point two. Item four point three, I now open the public hearing on item four point three. It reads as follows. Twenty twenty dash zero one one, third reading to an ordinance authorizing. One, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement. By and between Hampton County, South Carolina, the county. And Agriculture Scientific LLC, acting for itself, one or more affiliates. And or other project sponsors collectively to the company. Pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fee in lieu of avalerum taxes, FLO. With respect to the establishment and the expansion of certain facilities in the county project. Two, the benefit of a multi-county industrial business park to be made available to the company and the project. Three, certain special source resource credit, credits in connection with the project. And four, other matters related there to Agricultural Scientific LLC, previously known as Project J. We have no filed questions or comments now to item four point three. This public hearing is open. Mr. Strickland, do you have any comments on this?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman, other than, um, you know, I think we've, we're pretty well versed on this one, all of us. I've been through it at length in executive session and, and the same, you know, same deal applies. Our attorney, working on behalf of the county, as well as the attorney working on behalf of the project, have gone through these documents. We've come to an agreement on the language. And, you know, just wanted to remind everybody, this is the, the biggest project in the county's economic development history. Three hundred and fourteen million dollars, a little bit north of fifteen hundred jobs. That we are looking forward to getting online and making their impact in the county by two thousand twenty five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question? Is there any matching funds that the county has to, has to provide for getting this project into going? And how much does the county have to give in, in taxes or fee in lieu, or have it not fee in lieu, but, um. Like, um, understanding it's a million dollars we have to match, matching funds to get this project underway?
Mr. Strickland, I'm going to let you explain that.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Nguyen, and first, good, good to see you back and feeling better.
Thank you.
Um, so there's no matching funds involved in this. You know, what we've done here is because the, the project's investment is so large. It qualifies for what is known as a super fee in South Carolina. That is a four percent assessment ratio. Looking into the fee agreement, it looks like the county is going to be due about one point three million dollars in payments. You know, when this thing gets fully operational. So the county, you know, has not had to forward any funds for this project. The county will be serving as a, as a go-between on a number of grants that are involved with the project. I believe the Department of Commerce and the Department of Agriculture. Has about twelve million dollars in grants that are, that were awarded for this project. Whereas, you know, the county, you know, won't have to be paying anything out on that. The, you know, the Department of Commerce, Department of Agriculture will be sending checks to the county. And the county will be sending checks on to the company as we commonly do. So to answer your question, no, no matching funds. And a pretty, pretty nice payment that's going to be rolling in.
And Mr. Strickland, four percent of assessment, how is that payments that comes in earmarked on how it's to be used?
I believe the, the county has decided that, you know, portions of that payment are going to be allocated in a certain way. We're not going to vote on that tonight because the, the project's attorney has wanted to hold that multi-county park back. Because we, we're still some ambiguity as to where the actual project is going to sit on the one thousand acres out there. And that's something that we need to pass to multi-county. But I, I know that there's a plan for that, and it's going to be included in the language for the multi-county park, which we'll pass later.
I think we'd all appreciate as much transparency as we could on this to help us encourage, uh, but the, the voters and the taxpayers.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, we will now close the public hearing for item four point three. Item five on the agenda, public comments. We have no public comments this evening. Item six, approval of minutes. Six point one, November sixteen, two thousand twenty Hampton County Council Virtual Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I have read the minutes. I didn't see anything I thought needed to be changed or an error. I move that we approve the November sixteenth, twenty twenty Hampton County Council Virtual Meeting Minutes.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Nguyen?
Yay.
And myself, yay. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, presentations. Seven point one, Model UN. Councilmember Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's going to be a question and answer thing with this. I just received an annual report of the power of character. And part of our plan for the future. I've talked with you in retreats and a back and forth about the Model UN. But I'd like, you have a copy in front of you. Winthrop University is one of the main leading, where they have this. And it's been going on forever. Civics has pretty well been eliminated from our vocabulary. And our plan for the future involves some points that I like to bring up. And of course, some questions and answers from you boy fellas would be appreciated. All right, Model UN. Is simply you creating a Model UN within your whole school system and the whole district. It isn't related to one school's school. Of course, one school's probably going to be dominant because of its size. Some of the values of it, young people don't understand that other countries have the same problem. We've just got different faces. We've got different religions. We've got different names, Arabs. Iranians, what so forth. This is an attempt for our plan for the future, and it is one of the most excellent job, high-paying jobs. And most demanded in the market from the, from graduates all the way to the unborn. Plus, plus our people, our age could get involved in it. The lessons involved in it are simple. And only words. Analyzing a resolution. You teaching youngsters to get by with, with multiple, analyzing a resolution. And choosing your position on what's like Arabs. You know they want to burn us out. They got a bad attitude. But you're going to represent them at the table. You're going to find out why their, their needs. And, and, and believe me, the people without jobs is the same place, the universal names in every country. General Assembly, you form a committee and a flow chart. You make, making young people get up and give speeches. Getting them to simple resolutions, and they're taught by. And I like to bring up to the point that this is about every college. It even goes to, um, to the highest colleges in the United States, and it doesn't stop right here. It just so happened that Winthrop is one of the leading expedites. They didn't have a meeting this year because of Colford, and maybe might have it next year. It all depends on how our virus affects our environment. But can you believe that our plan for the future? Security, writing a resolution, you know this from ourselves, how complicated it is. And it takes a team effort to do it, and this is what we're really addressing. Writing an amendment. As we move on. We've got to get our youth, parents educated. We're not alone. We learn from other countries' history, US history, world history. Beginner taught at Hampton High Schools, and they're not having any funders for teachers. The General Assembly has cut back all funding for the knowledgeable teachers and the cost of providing these services. Think of all jobs that this could generate. In graduating classes as well as, like I've repeated, this is ongoing for everything. It discusses convention of on climate change, which is everybody's right here in Hampton County. As well as to the smallest and biggest person in the, in the United States. United Nations offices, ambassador, ambassadors. That has formed, and why do we have them in other countries? The universal decorations of human rights. Well, y'all tell me what y'all opinion is, if you will. What is the decorations of humans' rights? Is it got a chance to vote? Is it get out the freedom of speech, or is it, um? What kind of human rights are you talking about? It, it comes unto a whole canopy. The State Department, we're familiar with our State Department and what it does, background notes. Otherwise, you're going to have educational notes where you can improvise these things. State Department Religious Freedom Report, and the Constitution is very complicated. State Department Report on Human Trafficking. That's a terrible thing, but it happened right here in our country. State Department of Report on Terrorism. And World Health Organization, as we're much attended to and dependent on the World Health Organization. Who to help us navigate through this awesome virus that we're having that's killing so many people. Now, where is it related to? I would like to bring up some points about the. Well, I would like to, and propose a Workforce Renomination and Opportunity Act on the Regional Action Plan. Maybe this can be included in, and what are some of the terms of need of Model UN? That is certainly we're offering job nomination. Ex, um, the regional core team and some of the information that they imparted is how to strengthen Hampton County's workforce in these areas. Is there funding to help sustain the programs that can be implemented? Be careful with those words, that can be implemented. Why should we be more competitive? Installation of Model UN would give our youth and we're unborn all what it is in for me. Why should we getting involved in this? It's because it will give us a motive to understand that we are competition with the world. We're not going to change, and we're going to have to learn what causes the clock to tick. Did the Workforce Renomination and Opportunity Act consider the need of greater education and training opportunities? For the youth in the area of the greatest need, offering accessibility and the light and lack of adequate transportation? The study of different countries, mores, mores, distribution of populations, the same problems. And different faces and names, all incorporated in what's going on in America. Also, I would like you to please explain in different conversation about workforce development to me. And what is the role in Hampton County, and also what it offers Hampton County? Help us to explore the need for transparency and explain our needs in detail. What programs are you providing for the youth, ex-model, Model UN and civics? And where teach, and where to teach this, since schools have no funding for it, or no circumstances will be brought up. There is a dead end that you're going to accomplish anything in school soon. And I would like to county council in the future to petition and, and get involved in how we can get it acquainted into our system. What training programs are you providing for the citizen? How is the information for these programs diseliminated? What is meant by workforce? Please describe, enable JAG to Model UN. They came to us last year, these ladies, as by the way, most of them are in the beta club. They're very intelligent and will be a future powerhouse in the future for nomination and creation of our US of A. And also public relations with the county.
Mr. Nguyen, you got about two minutes.
Okay, well, and what I'm saying is with the two minutes. I would like for, everybody knows that we're trying to procure the goodies building where we rented or whatever. You know, it's on the street, that maybe the council would afford the benefits of trying to get that endeavor. And that we could put this in the house and there next to the house, next to the school things that we used to be at Fred's. In closing, I would like to read our Planet of the Future. Create a culture of philosophy, plant, philanthropy. There is a need for work toward developing a culture where our staff and our board embraces philanthropy. Fund development, donor stewardship. We will implement or expand current programs to connect donors, community leaders, and professional advisors with our mission. While we build a relationship, show impact, impact and knowledge with the community. Increase collecting, giving opportunities. We'll inform a donor-centric approach and focus on building long-term relationship with our donors. And I would like to close in that statement, all my heart, I wish y'all would control and the U Council were actively become backed with this. As I will be in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours, and I would like to point out, I'm not sure myself of any plan for the county itself to be involved in the goodies building. But we, we certainly appreciate your time and your presentation. It was very informative.
It was, it was, um, there is a need, okay?
And thank. Yes, sir, understood. All right. Item eight on the agenda, appointments. We have no appointment scheduled. Item nine, resolutions, proclamations. We have no resolutions or proclamations this evening. Item ten, third reading of ordinance. Ten point one point one, twenty twenty dash zero zero one. An ordinance to amend the amended and restated master agreement for establishment of the Quad County Industrial Park One, Part Two, and Part Three. Dated as May sixth, two thousand thirteen, entered by and among Allendale County, South Carolina. Bamberg County, South Carolina, Barnwell County, South Carolina, and Hampton County, South Carolina. Providing for the development of certain multi-county industrial parks. So as to include additional property geographically located in Hampton County, South Carolina. And anticipated to be owned and or operated by Yield Scientific LLC. In that portion of the parks delineated in the park agreement as part three. Geographically located in Hampton County, South Carolina, and other matters related there too. Mr. Strickland?
Um, nothing else from me, Mr. Chairman. I think we, we pretty well covered it during the public hearing.
All right. Was the pleasure of council in regards to item ten point one point one?
I make a motion that we accept third reading on the ordinance, ten point one point one.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir?
I would like some, uh, preview of novels about third, um, industrial complex. I know about one and two. Could you get, Mr. Strickland, give us a little enlightenment on what is three? And what does it consist of? What counties?
Oh, sir, Mr. Sure, Mr. Nguyen, um, so this, um, the master agreement for the multi-county industrial parks. You know, Hampton partners with Bamberg, Allendale, and Barnwell on all the parks in the Quad County Agreement. You know, there, um, there are some, you know, older agreements that are in, you know, Park One or Park Two. Um, these days, we're mostly dealing with three and four. Because, you know, Hampton joined the alliance after those. original three counties did. So it's really, you know, more of a, you know, statutory thing other than a geographical arrangement. Just has to do with, you know, when Hampton joined the park.
We have that in writing in form also. Is that in another?
I've got the the master agreement, you know, which breaks it down. I'd be glad to, you know, to share with the administrator for her to distribute.
I would be most proud to get it and I think the rest of us to consist of what we're dealing with in the future.
Sure. I'd be glad to get that out to you.
That's just, that's just transparency.
Sure.
I'd appreciate that. Well, um, Mr. Chairman, will this be provided to us?
Basically, as Mr. Strickland just stated, he'll give it to the administrator and she'll email it to us.
Yeah, I've, I've got easy access to it. I can get it to y'all first thing in the morning. You know, it's not a big deal.
Can't beat that for service. Thank you.
All right. All in favor? Councilman Phillips? Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Wayne?
Yay.
And myself, yay. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item 10.1.2, 2020-002, in ordinance authorizing, one, the executive execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement by and between Hampton County, South Carolina, the county, and Yield Scientific LLC, a company previously identified as Project Z acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and or other project sponsors collectively as a company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of avalerum taxes, FLO, with respect to the establishment and or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project. County Industrial Park, certain special source, special source revenue credits in connection with the project and for other matters relating there to Yield Scientific LLC, previously known as Project J. Mr. Strickland?
Um, nothing else from me on this one either, Mr. Chairman. I think we, we hit it pretty well in the public hearing. I would ask, um, as we get these executed copies of the ordinances, if the clerk could get those to me as soon as possible because I know their representation will be one.
All right. With that being said, Ms. Newton, if you could get those sent out to us, either tonight or say by 10 a.m., no later than 10 a.m. tomorrow morning, we can all get them signed.
I already have them ready to send tonight.
All right, that'll be great. So everyone will try to get those signed tonight. I think Mr. Wayne and Mr. Williams are in the building. All right.
Okay.
All right.
It only with your signature.
Okay, okay. All right. So with that being said, was, was the pleasure of counsel in item, in regards item 10.1.2.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve 10.1.2.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Wayne?
Yay.
And myself, yay. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item 10.1.3, 2020-11, third reading of an ordinance authorizing, one, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Hampton County, South Carolina, the county, and Agricultural Scientific LLC acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and or other project sponsors collectively, lost place, collectively the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant and accept certain negotiated fee in lieu of avalerum taxes, FLO, with respect to the establishment and or expansion of certain facilities in the county, project, the project. Number two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial business park to be made available to the company and the project. Three, certain special, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project and four, other matters relating there to agricultural scientific. Mr. Strickland?
Only thing to add, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to bring everybody up to speed as much as possible on the project. So the, uh, the actual plant and the greenhouses are under design right now over in the Netherlands, which is, you know, where, where that technology is coming from. They are still working through their site plan as to, you know, where exactly on the thousand acres the project is going to be. Our hope is that they are going to be stirring some productive dirt at some point in the next year. And then from there, looking at probably an 18-month build. So I just wanted to give everybody that quick note on, you know, it is moving, you know, as fast as something this big can move as
All right. All right. Was the pleasure of counsel in regards item 10.1.3.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept or approve ordinance 2020-011.
All right. We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On 4.3, Scientific LLC, Yield Scientific LLC acting for itself, and it goes and read the company of which the company shall covenant. That is a very controversial word to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of avalerum taxes and respect to the negotiated fees. Now, what if they don't come up with their part of the bargain where we've gone, where we at in contractual language or if they fail to produce where we're at and everything goes in, in the future where it be down the road or right away, is the county, is the covenant of the county going to be considered in this if they fall on their part?
Mr. Strickland?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's a standard clawback in this arrangement. So, you know, if for any reason the, um, the project was, you know, not to live up to the investment and the employment numbers that they pledged, um, you know, the county would be within its legal right to try to go after any revenues that they may have forfeited as the result of this agreement.
But it wouldn't be no cost out of pocket for the county?
No.
That's what I was worried about, the covenant. I pray and I hope that everybody's dreaming this to come true, but you got to cover your bases, Mr. Strickland.
And to that regard, you know, Mr. Wayne, I believe the county's, um, you know, covered as well as it can be at this point. Um, you know, that is pretty standard. Um, you know, we realize there's some risk involved and, you know, there'd be an opportunity to, to, uh, you know, come back and and get some of that revenue back, you know, should things not work out.
Well, let's pray it does. I don't misunderstand me, but you got to be prepared for war in a time of peace.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor? Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Wayne?
Yay.
And myself, yay. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10.2, second reading of ordinances. We have no second reading. 10.3, first reading of ordinances. We have no first reading. Item 11, bids. We have no bid. Item 12, council briefing. 12.1, chairman's update. Got a few things here. Good liberty to go out to the airport the other day, kind of an impromptu thing to engineers and quite a few site prep. People were there. There's a whole lot going on. There's quite a bit of airport traffic. One plane flew in for business in the county and while they were here, they stopped by one of the local restaurants for, uh, for lunch. They went to a deer processor and picked up some deer, deer meat while they were in the area. Quite a bit's being done out there. Moving on a little bit more, Mr. Strickland kind of touched on this earlier. Yield Scientific down in the Southern Carolina Industrial Campus, an early branch. If you haven't had a chance to ride by and take a look, you highly recommend that you do so. There's quite a bit of dirt been moved. The place is built up quite a bit. The greenhouse is being erected. Buildings going up. It's, uh, it's quite nice to see. The last item I wanted to speak on was over the weekend, the Hampton County Arts Council put on quite, uh, quite a show with several events. Friday night, myself, Mr. Hollinsworth and Ms. Elliott were in attendance. And a couple of things I wanted to highlight. But one of our members, Ms. Georgiana Nadelku, uh, she always does a fabulous job with the decoration. She goes above and beyond and we're blessed to have that type of professional decorating talent on the, on, on the council. And the Arts Council so deemed to give her award of appreciation for her efforts in all that. A little later in the evening, in the event, much to many of our surprise, Mr. Al Jenkins from Senator Scott's office, who's a regular attendee of ours, they're always invested in our county. Mr. Senator Scott sent some signed awards for several people. Ms. Elliott was recognized for her efforts as county administrator and everything she does for us. Ms. Nikki Smalls was recognized and presented an award from Senator Scott for being an ambassador of Hampton County, not only in Hampton County, but internationally. And all of you know, she actually performed at the Vatican for the Pope last year. And then lastly, uh, again, to my surprise, I received one of those certificates myself from Senator Scott's office and, you know, it was very humbling and we all appreciate everything that they do for our area. That's all that I have. Moving on, item 12.2, county attorney's update. Mr. Solomon, do you have anything for us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I sent out earlier today an update on the CSX legislation. If you hadn't had time to read it, it's pretty self-explanatory. I also attached a message, a message was sent along with the attachment, which is a letter from a lady named Nancy Wilson, who is with the Haynesworth Firm that had been represent, have been representing the county in these CSX matters. So I'll leave that information with you if you have, after you read, if you have any questions, just give me a call.
Okay. The... What action do you need, Mr. Solomon?
Say again.
What action, if any, do you need for us to take in this matter?
Well, I, I, my, my message was that we follow the advice of the attorney, which is come, maintain the county position as interested bystanders, but don't become act, an active participant in the litigation. That, that could be a very expensive endeavor. And if it, the position taken is fully vetted in the document that I sent you. So at this point, nothing. If you agree that we would maintain current posture, then we don't need to do anything. But that'll be a decision you guys will make.
Okay.
The only other things I have, just for information purposes, Barnwell Magistrate's office is closed due to COVID exposure. So if anybody starts raising the devil on the phone about you can't get a magistrate on to, to answer them, there's a reason. They can't go back in that office in Barnville. Hopefully, um, they will be able to get back in there by Wednesday. We're not sure. Jail call is being handled remotely. So people won't be deprived of having a chance to get out of jail once they find a way to get in jail. The, the only other thing is Rose may mention it when she gives the administration report. We had a, we had a conference call today with DHEC and EMA, our Emergency Management Department regarding what to do about the vaccines that are, that are going to be processed and sent to the county for distribution. They're, they were very vague at this point on what they had advised. And I think if I'm understanding it correctly, and I had a, an attorney with SCAC, I put him on to know and he, he listened in as well and we agreed that we probably need to wait and see what they come up with, they being DHEC and what they advise the county councils to do and the other local governments to do regarding distribution priority and handling employees of the local governments. So to be continued and probably in the next couple of weeks, a clearer picture will, will appear from DHEC about what they're going to require. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. It takes us to item 12.3, clerk's update. Ms. Newton?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let you know that I've already sent the documents for you to sign. So you should have them in your email.
I just, I just signed them. They should be back to you.
Okay. The other thing is, um, another former mayor passed away, James Risher from Gifford. We also, um, I think you all, there's sent emails that there was a county employee that passed away, also Ms. Smith and one of the Hampton Council's mom, Ms. Shapton, passed away. So if you can just keep all those families in prayer and also the family in Barnville that lost a little boy.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be praying for all of them.
Chairman, let me, let me mention one other thing in terms of prayers I forgot to mention at very first. Of course, this is December the 7th, very, a very important date in our country's history. Uh, we lost about 2,500 sailors at Pearl Harbor that day. So let's, let's remember and never forget the sacrifice. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for mentioning that.
Moving on, item 13, report to council. 13.1, administrator's report. Ms. Elliott?
Yes, sir. Um, Friday night, Mr. Wiggins informed me that Senator Scott apologized for not being able to be here for the announcement in the park. So he did send word that he would be coming at some time in the near future to, um, you know, visit with council and to, uh, you know, I guess pay tribute to all the hard work that's been going on here by council and everyone included. Also, and I think the chairman and maybe not Hollinsworth may know as much about this or more than I do, this was given me today. Let me know if you can see it.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
A check from Arnold Fields Community Endowment. I asked if I could take that to the bank. He said not yet.
But it's good.
It is for a thousand dollars. I don't think Mr. Charlie would take, take it like that, but I would try it. But, um, that is to, that is their, their matching part for the historical marker to go to the old National Guard Armory. And they will begin raising the other funds. They try to get community funds and, um, you know, and other places to look for the monies to go along with it to put it in. So they are moving forward with that project. And I was running, I didn't know if you had anything you might want to say about that or the chairman?
Well, I just want to say that the, as we speak, the, um, the marker is, the information for the marker is being developed and, and as for the money, uh, is going to be raised, you know, it, it will be there. It will be there. is going to be raised, you know, it, it will be there. It will be there for the marker to be erected there at the old National Guard Armory. So that's progress and, you know, that's work in progress and, and the endowment is looking forward to their participation and making it happen.
And on the
All right.
Today we had
If you don't mind, I would
Oh, sorry.
Can I expand on one of your earlier points with Senator Scott's office? I forgot to mention this. I apologize.
Oh, absolutely.
Apparently Senator Scott got word that we're developing a local lobbying team that I've been trying to put together for Hampton County to lobby for our area to make sure that Hampton County is on everybody's radar, which right now we are, and we want to stay that way. And Senator Scott has requested once our, once our team is assembled that we get with his office. They would like to be our first stop in DC. Yep. Yeah, that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, we had a meeting today, as Attorney Solomon started out with. And the purpose for this is they've informed us from the state. We don't know when it's coming. We really don't know how many vials that we will get. But we're trying to develop a list of the individuals who will be the first to be offered the vaccine. Both at this point in time have a two, it's a two-shot vaccination. Obviously, it will be geared towards the first responders initially, doctors, nurses, EMS, law enforcement, firefighters, and then it'll roll on out from there. But first one is you take it one day and then it's within, I think, twenty-six to twenty-eight days, you get the second one. But there, right now, there are two, the Pfizer and then Mercedi, Merceder, something like that. So we'll, as soon as, you know, we have any additional information, we'll pass it on. We did meet with the towns, representatives from each town, various other organizations in the county, and we've asked towns to develop a list of their personnel that, you know, they would like to be added to the, you know, to the first responder list. In other words, if we get like, let's say, two hundred vials and we go down to the two hundred, which you have three or four people in there that don't show up or for one reason or another aren't, don't have the ability to come in and take it that day, we want to be able to go to the next one. Because once you open what it is shipped to us in, it has a certain, a very short lifespan that it has to be utilized. And so we've, we've got to be ready for, you know, for that process when it comes in. They haven't really decided whether it's going through the hospital, DHEC, whether EMS will be involved in actually dispensing the vaccine. But it's, it's kind of a hurry up and wait mode at this time. And that's about all I have.
Ms. Elliott, if you don't mind, could you go across Saturday night's events up at the courthouse and the theater and stuff?
Sure. Well, I would like to, our sheriff, I think we might have the only singing sheriff in, in South Carolina. Nikki said that I was apparently the only one that could get him to come out and sing in public like that because he, he turned her down, his daughter. But we did have three generations there that sang. The sheriff sang, his daughter Nikki sang, and then, and I apologize, I did not catch the young lady's name to memory, but it's his granddaughter. And I do believe they got an overabundance of talent in their family. We had one of Ms. Heather Brimmer's children, daughters, sang as well. There were several other young ladies from the community, and, and they all have way more talent than I have. And my hands off to them. They did an excellent job. We had quite a crowd. We had a, a good crowd, I believe. Ms. Annette said that the, as far as the art exhibit, that she was rarely for just more than a minute or so at the time in there by herself. We had people going in and out all night. We had some vendors that had some nice paintings. Some of them had oyster shells that were painted for sale, all kinds of items. I think they did a good business. I did have the opportunity to talk to each and every one of them. They were all very excited, wanting to do it again, looking forward to working with us on expanding the event over the Arts Council. We did have Santa Claus. He was an awesome hit with the little children. And I was coming out to come down to the courthouse and one little girl, maybe four, five, went running past me with a phone and she had a camera on and she said, I am going to get a picture of Santa Claus. And, you know, I looked around, I think Ms. Heather was standing there and I looked at her and I said, that's what it's all about. And so we did have quite, quite a few families brought their children. Each event that is, is held, we are getting more, more and more attendees. And it's, it's great to see those buildings being in use. It was, it's fantastic to see that kind of traffic on Lee Avenue and the courthouse. I, I'd like to say I think I need battle pay because I went up on the balcony and put the tree up and put lights on it. I don't like heights. So if it, everything, everything worked out. I had to get security to come back in. Let me back in on Saturday to finish up. But, so my hat's off to them. They came in, let me go up, finish. Of course, I thought they locked me in there for a little bit. And, but everything I believe went, went off without a hitch, other than a little bit of rain and wind. We had Friday night messed up some stuff. But it's, it's nothing that we didn't, you know, get together and overcome and everything looked great for Saturday, just like it did for Friday night. So I think a good time was had by all. Everybody appreciated. Not everybody may have understood the artwork, but I, I think everybody can appreciate all of the artwork that was there. And I know Dr. Hollinsworth came, Mr. Grant. We had quite, quite a few, quite a few people there on Saturday night and Friday night. So it was I think Ms. Heather's doing an excellent job in promoting the town, the county, and bringing in different people for, you know, the different events. That's that's about it, I guess.
All right. That takes us to item fourteen, executive session. Wilson, let us know when we're clear on your end. Well, hold on, hold on. I'll tell you about, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Wynn?
Yay.
And myself, yay. We have, motion carries unanimously. We're now in executive session. Mr. Wilson, let us know when we're clear to proceed. All right.
All right. And we are back recording.
All right. So we're verified recording now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to come out of executive session? Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Wynn?
Yay.
And myself, yay. We are now out of executive session. Item fifteen, report out of executive session, fifteen point one, personnel matter, treasurer's office. Matters were discussed and no actions were taken. Item sixteen, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Councilman Phillips?
Yay.
Councilman Hollinsworth?
Yay.
Councilman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Wynn?
Yay.
And myself, yay. We are now adjourned. God bless you all.
Take care.
I have a blessed night. Thank you all.
Thank you.